Absolute, please. Sunshine notice, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners' Public Meeting, Tuesday, June 18, 2024. The time is 7:08. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, notice that this meeting was published in December 7, 2023, issues of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News, and the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's Office. Commissioner Evans. Commiss- Commissioner Tucci is absent excused this evening. Commissioner Scarpelli?
Here.
Commissioner Petrako?
Here.
Mayor Kelly?
Present.
All present mayor, except for Commissioner Tucci, he is absent excused.
Thank you. Minutes, Madam Clerk?
We have no minutes this evening. Mayor.
Communications?
No communications this evening.
Alright, then let's roll right into proclamations. The first one we have is recognizing the 80th Anniversary of D-Day. The reason for this delay, I know D-Day was at our last, it was the actual day of our last scheduled Board of Commissioners' meeting, and that's because one of our veterans is a D-Day veteran, and he was unfortunately in the hospital on D-Day. But his family, he's out of the hospital now, but his family's here to see this resolution, and so we're going to read it now as a Board of Commissioners, starting with Commissioner Evans.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas we remember the invasion on June 6 of 156,000 Allied troops, stormed 50 miles of the Normandy beaches, and whereas we remember that day due to bad ocean waves and currents, that amphibious tanks and rocket protection from rocket boats were not possible. And...
And whereas we remember the fearless infantry charged the beach with little support to fortified positions that they advanced toward, 4,000 Allied troops, what they advanced toward, and 4,000 Allied troops died for world freedom. And whereas we remember that by dawn, thousands of paratroopers were deployed behind enemy lines while aircrafts were being shot from the sky, the paratroopers bravely jumped into the night air to secure bridges and strategic targets within France, and...
Whereas we remember that without a brilliant plan, heroic men and women and their tremendous sacrifices, the Allied efforts may have not succeeded that day. And whereas we remember that over 11,000 aircraft, 5,000 ships, 50,000 vehicles, and 326,000 troops combined in Operation Overlord, and this was the largest amphibious invasion in history, and...
Whereas we remember all who lost their lives during World War II, the estimate is 75 million, 20 million soldiers and over 40 million civilians. Now therefore be proclaimed that Mayor Kelly and the Board of Commissioners and the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, declares June 6, the 80th Anniversary of D-Day encourages all citizens to support, honor, and protect the memories of our heroes that fought and died for world peace.
Thank you. Uh, the veteran who was at D-Day, his name was Vincent Pupuluso. His family is here to see the proclamation read, however, they've asked not to make any statement or speech at this time. Moving on, we're going to have the Juneteenth proclamation, and that is also going to be read by the entire board, starting with Commissioner Evans again.
Whereas our country is made up of people from every nation on earth who are declared equal, not only in freedom, but also in justice, both of which are essential for a healthy human civilization. Whereas our nation was conceived on July 4, 1776, with the Declaration of Independence, the classic statement being, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, and that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness," and...
And whereas, at 2:00 PM on New Year's Day, January 1, 1863, using his war powers as president, Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation, providing that all persons held as slaves within any state or designated part of a state shall be then thenceforward and forever free. And whereas the Emancipation Proclamation made the permanent abolition of slavery a Union war aim and provided the legal framework for the emancipation of nearly all 4 million slaves as the Union armies advanced. And whereas, hearing of the proclamation, many slaves escaped to Union lines as the army units moved south, and...
Whereas on June 19, 1865, almost two and a half years later, Major General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas, and announced the end of both the Civil War and slavery. With this amount announcement, the people of Texas are informed that in accordance with a proclamation from the Executive of the United States, all slaves are free. This involves an absolute equality in personal rights and rights of property between the former masters and slaves, and that connection heretofore existing between them become that between employer and hired labor. The freedmen are advised to remain at all their present homes and work for wages. They are informed that they will not be allowed to collect at the military post, and they will not be supported in idleness either there or elsewhere, and... Whereas the Texans began to celebrate the celebration of Juneteenth in 1866 with the community events such as parades, cookouts, prayer gatherings, musical performance, and historic cultural readings. Some communities purchased land for Juneteenth celebrations.
Whereas the following year, the first official Juneteenth celebration took place in Texas and have continued across the United States throughout the years. Whereas Juneteenth is the oldest nationally celebrated commemoration of the ending of slavery, and whereas Juneteenth is an important opportunity to not only honor, but to effectuate the principles of the Declaration of Independence and celebrate the achievements and contributions that African Americans have made and continue to make across our country. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Nutley Board of Commissioners and the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey hereby extend greetings and best wishes to all observing June 19, 2024, as Juneteenth thing, Juneteenth.
At this time, I'd like to bring up Courtney Johnson, our Nutley Culture, Inclusion, and Diversity Council Chair, and I'd also like to bring up Lady Tricia Sipio, our area representative from the NAACP.
I don't think I need to mic. Mayor, Board of Commissioners, I think for tonight, we were always at the tip of the spear with this. Prior to COVID, we celebrated the first Juneteenth, and it happened to fall. We just went ahead and we did it. We said we're going to celebrate Juneteenth, and it happened to fall directly on the first official celebration of Juneteenth. So we were at the tip of the spear. This is not a start of a point for us. This is something that you graciously have allowed to happen even before we even knew really the magnitude of the holiday. And there, at that particular time, we did have the NAACP with us, and she was like, hey, look, I know that Nutley's going forward. It seems like you guys are already ahead of the tip of the spear, and she wanted to come out and dress dresses tonight, so I'm going to move out of our way. Lady Tricia Sipio.
Good evening. Thank you, first of all, for having us. Thank you for the proclamation. You have no idea what it means to me. I sit on the Executive Board for both the Orange and Maplewood Branch of the NAACP, which covers 11 cities, and you're one of them. And I also sit on the Executive Board for the state, the New Jersey State Conference. I also have with me, if you don't mind, come and stand up for me, Bill, our first Vice President and Axol Chair for the Orange and Maplewood Branch. Juneteenth may mark just one moment in the struggle for emancipation, but the holiday gives us an occasion to reflect on the profound contribution of enslaved Black Americans to the cause of human freedom. Recognizing Juneteenth isn't just about offering a day off, it's about fostering education, reflection, and action toward racial equity. By celebrating this national holiday, Nutley demonstrates its commitment to creating a more inclusive environment for all of its residents. Juneteenth has become not only a time to commemorate Black liberation from the institution of slavery, but also a time to highlight the resilience, solidarity, and culture of Black community. It is a time for Black Americans to reflect on ancestral roots. It's one thing to succeed as a community, it's another to thrive. So again, I just want to praise you so much for what you have done, for being ahead of other towns I won't take a mention. Okay? I won't do that, but I want to say, we are grateful to have you as a partner, and we're here for you for whatever the occasion is. We support you and like you support us. So I ask you today to just remember us, and anytime there's something that needs to happen, give us a call. We thank for the Courtney because he has been a true inspiration to getting to you guys. I'm grateful that I can come to you and call on you, and I hope that I can call on you some more. So, thank you very much, and I appreciate you.
Thank you. Do you want to come up and take a picture with the board?
I'm sorry, but I...
They didn't want to stay for the budget?
I guess not.
Would be riveting.
Okay, moving on, we have reports. Commissioner Petrako, you have a public safety report?
I do. I have my public safety report. Thank you, Mayor.
And then Commissioner Tucci's not here, but he has his Shade Tree Report for the month of May 2024. Bills, Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Bill list for June 18, 2024, Public Affairs, $131,718.31. Revenue and Finance, $2,788,718.81. Public Safety, $51,884.41. Public Works, $58,809.38. Parks and Public Property, $138,993.59. Water Utility, $362,053.66. Payroll, as of Friday, June 7, regular payroll total, $935,399.53. Overtime Payroll Total, $58,958.09. Total Payroll, $994,357.62. For grand total of $4,526,535.78.
Move the bills. Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Hi.
Commissioner Petrako?
Hi.
Mayor Kelly?
Hi.
And that's it for bills, Mayor.
At this time, we'll have public comment on agenda items only. If anyone wishes to be heard on agenda items only, please approach the microphone and state your name and address. Seeing no one, we'll move on to Board of Commissioner announcements. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing this evening.
Oh, thank you. I do. My first announcement is we have Summerfest, which I do with Commissioner Tucci. It's this Thursday, this June 27. It's going to be from Franklin Ave from Chestnut to New Street, so please come out for a good time. I just wanted to update the public. All of a sudden, we're getting a rash of these quads and motorcycles going through our town on a regular basis, especially on Washington Avenue. Actually, on Sunday, there was a bunch of those bikers at the Delta Station on Kingsland and Passaic Avenue. I actually was driving by there. So what we're going to be looking to do, because as we know, with these laws, the bail reform, the cops can't chase them, just to let you know. They can't set up roadblocks just to let you know. It's a different America today, to say the least. But at any rate, what Jersey City and some of the cities have done is a news to you, right, Sam? So they have set ordinances in their town with the gas stations, and we're drafting one up in public safety now to make sure the gas stations around our town cannot sell gas to any motorcycle that's not registered or with a license plate, at least. Any quads, the only way they could sell gas to those vehicles that are not licensed plate or registered is if it's on a trailer or in the back of a van, something like that. But we are doing everything in our power to stop that, but it's ridiculous, and something's got to be done to ride it on sidewalks and things like that. The rash on our petty crimes of the cars, that has really ticked down. Actually, last week, we just had a couple kids, 16 and a 14 year old kid, believe it or not, gotten the catalytic converters out of a car. Thank God our police department caught them in the act, and about 20 minutes later, they were released. So again, if anybody's out there listening, keep your doors locked for safety. If you have a chance, you're sitting in your shops or you're bored, start emailing your legislators, because until these laws are changed, we are going to put up with this in all suburban towns and in their cities. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And just to be clear, that's not a policy of the town or the Board of Commissioners that you can't chase these kids. It's the Attorney General who dictates that policy. I don't have much on for this evening, or in terms of announcements, but we are having the Fourth of July fireworks celebration. We have a meeting, a couple meetings in between that. Look out for more information, but that's going to be a team effort from the entire Board of Commissioners, public safety, DPW, Parks and Rec, everyone's on board to make our nation's 248th birthday a great time for everyone. So we're going to move on to ordinance introductions. Commissioner Scarpelli?
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance number 3557, in ordinance amending Chapter 622 of the Code of the Township of Nutley entitled Stormwater, and more specifically adding Article 2, privately owned salt stores for compliance with the municipal stormwater regulations program requirements set forth by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading and advertised in the Nutley Sun, together with the notice required by law, and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on July 16, 2024. Move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Hi.
Commissioner Petrako?
Hi.
Mayor Kelly?
Hi.
The, I guess, the next ordinance for introduction, Commissioner Petrako?
Yes, thank you. Ordinance number 33, I'm sorry, 3558, in ordinance to amend an ordinance codified in the Code of the Township of Nutley, Chapter 228, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, particularly Auto 7, Special Zones and Areas, Section 29A, entitled Handicap Parking, to add to the location set forth thereon. This is for 51 Passaic Avenue. I move that this ordinance be passed to the second reading and advertise in Nutley Sun, together with the notice required by law, and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners to be held at its second reading on July 16. I move it.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Hi.
Commissioner Petrako?
Hi.
Mayor Kelly?
Hi.
Now we have ordinances on for a second reading and public hearing. The next one, Commissioner Evans or Commissioner Scarpelli? Do you have a preference?
Do the first one. I'll do the second one?
Sure.
Right.
So the first one is for to codify in our code revised water rates for our water utility. The ordinance itself establishes rates for usage of water as well as various interconnect services that crop up from time to time. Public hearing?
Do we, we...
You usually call for the public hearing.
Is it a motion for a public? No, it's a motion to close, sorry. Brain fart. So at this time, we'll hear, have a public hearing on ordinance number 3552, in ordinance to amend Chapter 685 of the Code of the Township of Nutley entitled Water, and more specifically Article 1 Regulations and Rates. Anyone who wishes to be heard, please approach the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Seeing no one, motion to close?
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Hi.
Commissioner Petrako?
Hi.
Mayor Kelly?
Hi.
Move the ordinance?
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Hi.
Commissioner Petrako?
Hi.
Mayor Kelly?
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli, you want to take?
Yes, ordinance number 3553, in ordinance to amend Chapter 585 of the Code of the Township of Nutley entitled Sewer, and more specifically amending Article 1 and 2, and adding Article 7 Rates. This establishes, this is rates for the new sewer utility, which should take some of the charges that are normally in your property tax and make it more equitable as a consumption, what you use, so it's more equitable than being included in your property taxes. Mr. Travis, anything to add?
Just when we did, looked at this, of the 18 towns in SS County that we're comparable to, Nutley was the only town that included 100% sewer costs in the property tax base. All other towns either had a single utility, a combined utility, or they had separate billing within the property tax base for sewer charges. So all we're doing is with this is we're actually, we're at a step, so we're bringing it into a combined utility, which is the preferred way to handle.
Okay, so at this time, we'll open up the ordinance number 3553 for a public hearing. It's an ordinance to amend Chapter 585 of the Code of the Township of Nutley entitled Sewer, more specifically amending Article 1 and 3, and adding Article 7 Rates. Anyone who wishes to be heard on this ordinance, please approach the microphone and state your name and address for the record, please.
Will we close the public hearing? Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Hi.
Commissioner Petrako?
Hi.
Mayor Kelly?
Hi.
Move the ordinance? Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Hi.
Commissioner Petrako?
Hi.
Mayor Kelly?
Hi.
The next one we have is ordinance number 3551. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a, is an ordinance which allows municipalities to increase the limit on appropriation increases in the annual budget from 2.5% to 3.5%. This is an annual occurrence. Most years, we actually, it creates a bank, which is a memo entry. Most years, we don't utilize that, given the very significant costs that we have incurred. This year, it was necessary to utilize the 1%.
Okay, so at this time, we'll open up the floor for a public hearing on ordinance number 3551, calendar year 2024, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and establish a cat bank. Oh, yeah, yeah. Commissioner Evans, could you repeat?
Do you want me to repeat that?
Yes.
Now? Is that better? It's better. Yeah, there's... Yeah, it's hard with the fan. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, the fan makes it difficult, but we are, thank you for that. We are...
I'm getting hot, Commissioner. Can we turn that fan back on?
Well, then you should talk less. So we will be upgrading chambers, and we'll be getting a new microphone system, so be patient, please. I'll repeat. The cat bank is allowed by statute to increase appropriations from 2.5% to 3.5% to allowable increase. Normally, it creates a memo entry. However, this year, we actually had to utilize the cat bank to actually conform the budget to meet with the state standards. So it's a 1% adjustment in appropriations.
So we will open the public hearing ordinance number 3551, ordinance to exceed municipal budget appropriation limits and establish a cat bank. Anyone who wishes to be heard on this ordinance, please approach the microphone and state your name and address for the record, please.
Seeing no one? Hi.
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 Move the ordinance?
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Hi.
Commissioner Petrako?
Hi.
Mayor Kelly?
Hi.
Commissioner Evans, we have the 2024 municipal budget, which if I understand correctly, has not yet been approved by the state, so we're going to open the, we're going to have a public hearing on it, but we won't be able to vote on it this evening.
That's correct.
So, anything you would like to add?
Yes, I have a couple of things that we need to do, so I have a resolution that I have to read to allow the public hearing to go forth. It's a resolution of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, New Jersey authorizing the budget to be read by title only. We do this every year, where we, when we introduce it, we read it by title. And however, there is just a step that we need to put onto the record that complies with statute. So whereas NJSA 48:4-8, as amended by L215C9514, and in 2015, provides that the budget be read by title only at the time of the public hearing, if the resolution is passed by no less than a majority of the full governing body, providing that at least one week before the date of the public hearing, a complete copy of the budget had been made available for the public inspection and has been available to each person upon request. Whereas these two conditions have been met, now therefore be resolved that after closing the public hearing, the governing body may adopt by title without amendments or any, or may approve amendments as provided by NJSA 48:4-9 before adoption. Adoption. We will have a public hearing on the budget as it was reintroduced. However, we also have, and I will read it for tonight, I have a budget amendment that has to be read for two reasons. One, we were able to, as we do all the time, continue to find... as we do all the time, continue to find areas where we can save, save money. So we were able to remove uh, three hundred thousand dollars out of the budget, uh, for the coming year. Uh, and we also, uh, upon review by the state, which, uh, we're still in the process of finalizing, uh, uh, change the cap requirement calculation for what's in, meets the cap, the cap limitation. Uh, and actually, uh, by their action, they actually made the cap calculation more stringent to comply with. So as a result, we had to make further adjustments in order to meet the cap requirement and get that, uh, through the state. So the first step tonight is we did introduce the budget, uh, um, uh, weeks ago, so it's been out there more than in advance. Uh, and we, so we'll hold a public hearing on the budget as it was introduced. Uh, that budget, uh, uh, when you net through revenues and appropriations, uh, called for a one hundred and ten dollar increase in the municipal tax of the average household. Uh, it also, there's also statutory requirement for the library, uh, which adds another fourteen dollars, uh, to, uh, the budget. So the municipal side, when you look at it, is a hundred and twenty-six dollars. Uh, with the adjustments that we've been able to make, uh, that amendment will be, uh, introduced tonight. We'll need to continue the meeting in order to have a hearing on it next week. Uh, and by that time, we should have all the clearances that we need for the state to adopt. But in doing so, it reduces the municipal increase down to seventy-seven dollars, while preserving the library increase at fourteen. So the total increase drops from a hundred and twenty-six dollars to the average household, down to ninety-three dollars for the average household. Um, I, uh, I did take a look at the school, which introduced, uh, their budget and adopted it. Uh, and their gross increase, uh, for the next school year, which begins July first, is three hundred and thirty-one dollars. However, since their year begins in July and our year begins in January, we get to pick up half of what the increase was last year, plus half of the increase for the coming year, so July through December, which averages the actual increase down to about two hundred and twelve dollars. So we're up ninety-three dollars. Uh, the school's at two hundred and twelve. Uh, and working with the county, we were able to, uh, get a benefit from the county, which, uh, I'm waiting for certification on, but tentatively, uh, that will reduce the county tax by fifty dollars to the average household. So ninety-three plus two, twelve minus fifty, uh, the, the tax levy for the township is shaping up to be a total of, uh, two hundred and fifty-five dollars, down from what was thought to be somewhere between four hundred and four hundred and fifty dollars. So there's been a lot of work to be done to get down. Uh, but I share that because we only, we only address uh, the, just the municipal piece, but there are these other components, so that when taxpayers get their tax bill, uh, they, they don't, they don't understand, you know, our piece versus their piece. What they understand is what's coming out of my pocket in total. And so we've done a lot of work, uh, and we've been able to get that estimated number down quite a bit. Uh, so with that, we can have a, uh, public, a public comment, uh, in, uh, I'm sorry, did I didn't do that? All right.
We need to do that.
So.
Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca? Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Okay, so now.
Now, now we can have the public comment on the, uh, inch, the budget that was introduced, uh, last month, uh, with the caveat that there's gonna be, we're introducing a new budget, uh, that is gonna be
An amendment, yeah.
Much more favorable. So anyone who wishes to be heard on the budget, please approach the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Uh, seeing none, uh, I move to close the.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye. And again, we're, we're not voting on the budget this evening. Uh, we're still waiting on state approval and, uh, we're amending the budget, uh, to be much more favorable to the entire township.
Yes.
And that, that budget adoption is scheduled for Wednesday, June twenty-sixth, uh, twenty twenty-four at nine thirty AM.
Yes, and John, just, I'd like to have Ray Saranelli, our outside order,
Sure.
share a few comments from his view of the budget and where we are.
Sure.
So as usual, Commissioner, Commissioner Evans covered almost all of the things I was gonna cover as far as amounts, but I did just want to get a couple amounts on the record, uh, before you go ahead and vote on the amendment. So you started the process on May twenty-first, where you introduced the budget that you felt was a work in process. Uh, introduced budget was sixty-two million nine hundred and seventy-one thousand with a tax levy of forty-three million one twenty-nine. Uh, that was an increase of a million eighty-six in the tax levy, uh, which was gonna bring the average taxpayer's tax for municipal purposes to four thousand two sixty-six, which was a hundred and ten dollar increase, or two point six five percent. The amendment resolution, uh, that you will be voting on next includes, uh, a budget that's now been brought down to sixty-two million five hundred and seventy-four thousand. It also has a tax levy of forty-two thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars, which is now an increase of seventy, seven hundred and eighty-five thousand instead of one million oh eighty-six. So the average taxpayer will see a seventy-seven dollar increase for the municipal part of the budget. That's one point eight five percent for the municipal share of tax increase, which in my view is pretty reasonable, given inflation and, and all of the other things that you've had, uh, to deal with. You were able to do that because, uh, as Commissioner Evans stated, some of the expenses were reduced, reduced in the last month, and that's included in the resolution for consideration. Um, just so you and the public are aware of the process that the municipal budget goes through, which was a little bit different than some of, uh, what other local governments go through, school boards, et cetera. Fan came back on? I'll speak, I'll try and speak into the microphone. Uh, so this, um, the state has, uh, a, a pretty arduous review of the budget and the cap. So you're restricted, you have two caps. You have an appropriation cap, which is two and a half percent, and adjusted to three and a half percent if you pass the ordinance. And you have a second cap for your, uh, levy, which is two percent. Both of those caps have some exceptions, but the state reviews that process in detail. Um, we spent a lot of time going through that with both of them, and, uh, we now believe we're at a point where the budget would, could, would or could be adopted and still be within all of the requirements of the state. Um, just kind of historically, because I've been around for a long time. Um, you know, you've kind of come full circle on the Hoffmil Roche problem, I'll call it, when they departed. You had a a big loss in, um, tax revenue. You got some state aid. There's new construction there. Things have stabilized and you've had a pretty balanced increase in the tax levy, um, for the last several years. What hasn't been so easy to manage has been the increase in expenses. Most of the expense increases, um, come from things that are outside of your control, health insurance, pension, um, trash, recycling, uh, public safety is a big part of this year's increase. Uh, you know, public safety costs money, and if you want to have a safe community, uh, there, there's gonna be increases, particularly with the fact that in the last few years, you've dealt with a cap that's at two percent or two and a half percent, and inflation was at eight percent or more, and it's still at three and a half percent, give or take, and looks like it's gonna be at that again this year. So you're dealing with restrictions that don't match up with the economy. You've planned through that. You've had cap banks that you've set aside that have now come into play. But I did want to say, this is really for the other commissioners, that going forward, while you're doing well on the revenue side and you've been able to keep taxes down, the problem that you're gonna have to deal with is the cap restriction on the appropriation side. So it's kind of putting you on notice that next year's budget is probably gonna be much more difficult than this year's budget due to the restrictions, uh, that come into effect on the appropriation side. Um, so, um, I know there's been a fair amount of concern about budget, budget process, et cetera, as it relates to other governments in Nutley. I just wanted to make it clear that, uh, the process that you go through is one where all of the commissioners are involved. You each prepare your own individual budget with the chief person involved at, in your commission. That's submitted to, uh, Revenue and Finance Commissioner. It's reviewed in detail. They go over the, all of the salaries, make sure everything's provided for, and that the treasurer has to certify that there's, uh, all the known expenses are budgeted for. Commissioner Evans and myself also spent a considerable amount of time reviewing and evaluating the revenues to make sure what you're anticipating, uh, each year going forward, uh, is realistic, that you're gonna make that. The state then reviews it and make sure that it's realistic. He discusses that with the other commissioners. You've cooperated on what reasonable revenue anticipation, uh, would be. And since I've been here for, is a long time, back to nineteen seventy-seven, there has not been an over expenditure of a budget, and there's not been an operating deficit of a budget. Uh, and for the last twenty-plus years, you've had one CPA talking to another CPA who understands the details of the budget and how it has to be tracked from year to year. So, uh, I think it's fair to say that those kind of issues have not come up here, and I don't expect them to come up here. Your process tonight, uh, would be to approve the resolution for amending the budget that has to get advertised on Sunday, and there'll be a public hearing on Wednesday at nine thirty to finalize and adopt the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Saranelli, and I, I can honestly say, every year when we start talking about the budget, I, I scratch my head and wonder how we're gonna get everything down, but this entire board, we, we sharpen our pencils and we work together to really get the, uh, the budget down to, uh, an affordable increase. And I really want to thank Commissioner Evans for all his work he does and, and really, uh, do be the financial wizard and, and make sure everything, uh, uh, is, is where it needs to be, and so we can continue to, uh, run an affordable township here. Uh, back to you, Commissioner Evans.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so, uh, just let's move it along. I have a budget amendment resolution, uh, that we will introduce tonight. It will be advertised, uh, and in the newspaper, and it will be available online, uh, for review. Uh, and, uh, as you mentioned, we will, uh, have a hearing on the budget, uh, on the budget amendment, uh, next Wednesday morning, uh, at nine thirty. Uh, the reason for that is this, this amendment reduces our overall costs by over three hundred thousand dollars across, uh, several areas. There are some adjustments in here because of, uh, new requirements from the state that had to, you know, affect certain line items. So, uh, whereas the local municipal budget, budget for twenty twenty-four was approved on the twenty-first day of May. Uh, and whereas the public hearing on said budget has been held as advertised, and whereas it is desired to amend, uh, the said, uh, approved budget, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, that the following amendments, uh, uh, to be approved, to the approved budget are, are made, and they are listed in, uh, the resolution. Be further resolved that the three certified copies of this resolution be filed forthwith with the Office of the Director of Local Governmental Services for certification of the local municipal budget so amended. Be further resolved that this uh, completed amendment in accordance with NJSA forty-eight, colon, four, dash, nine, be published in the Herald News on Sunday, June twenty-third, and that said publication contain notice of a public hearing on said amendment to be held at the Nutley Municipal Building on Wednesday, June twenty-sixth, twenty-four, at nine thirty AM. It is hereby certified that this is a true copy of a resolution amending the budget adopted by the Board of Commissioners on May twenty-sixth, June twenty, uh, May twenty-sixth, uh, by the Board of Commissioners on June twenty-sixth, uh, uh, twenty twenty-four, so move. Aye.
Aye.
Yes, just before I vote, I just have to make a comment. I too want to thank Tom for all the hard work he does. And Ray, you were saying that you've been here since nineteen seventy-seven. And I have to tell you, if, and I know you've been here, I've been born here, I'm gonna hear a little longer than you. But I have to tell you, it's been a struggle in public safety, and you mentioned the cost to public safety. So if you've been here since nineteen seventy-seven, then you would know this fact. Nutley has the same amount of officers we did in nineteen seventy-seven. And in my opinion, it's getting to the point where these police officers are being held over all the time. You know, they're working sixteen-hour shifts, a lot of them. And how can you be proactive when you're working sixteen-hour shifts? So, through the years that I've been in Nutley, almost sixty now, Elbow has about a hundred and thirty guys, Boomfield has the same, Clinton has over two hundred. So, as I want to hold the cost down as well in public safety, and Tom, you've been nothing but a friend to public safety, because for some reason and somehow you got us the money. But moving forward, I see it being an issue here. And with these caps in place, and you know, I, we talked about this privately in that last meeting, and I know it's a struggle in every town, but I don't know with the future holes, because it's gonna be impossible to do this, have, you know, sixty-eight cops from nineteen seventy-five to present. Things are changing all over the place, and I'm not downgrading anybody here, and I appreciate your professionalism, but being the Public Safety Director, the next few, four years, something has to be done to get these police officers more help, because they're being held over, being denied vacation time. You know, they can't work sixteen hours. In my opinion, they're gonna get hurt and make a bad decision, or they're gonna hurt somebody to make a bad decision. So however, we could work as a team to solve that problem moving forward, but I know with the caps in place, it almost makes it impossible. So I would love to have a talk with you and Commissioner Evans about what the future holds for the police department and, and public safety. Aye.
Aye. Uh, Commissioner Evans, you wanna roll right into the rest of your resolutions?
Yes. Okay.
Do you need them?
I have it. Whereas NJSA forty-eight, colon, five, sixteen requires that the governing body of any local unit shall not pay out uh, of its monies unless the person claiming or receiving payment first presents a detailed bill of items or demand specifying particularly how the bill or demand is made up, the invoice with the certification of the party claiming payment that the bill or demand is correct, uh, claimant certification. Whereas payment requires a written electronic certification of some, uh, officer or duty designated, uh, duly designated employee of the local unit having knowledge of the facts that the goods have been received or services rendered to the local unit, uh, certification of the user department. Yeah, whereas NJAC five, colon, thirty-nine, dash, nine, A, six, C, NJAC five thirty, five, colon, thirty-one, dash, four, one, and local finance loan notice, two thousand eighteen, uh, dash, thirteen, gives local units discretion not to require claimant certification by enacting a standard policy by resolution for vendors and claimants who do not provide such certification as part of its normal course of business. Whereas the treasurer has in place internal accounting controls and has determined that same, uh, to be sufficient to avoid errors and fraud in processing claims of payment, now therefore be resolved by the mayor and the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that it is, uh, hereby, that it hereby establishes a policy requiring claimant signature under the following circumstances only. under the following circumstances only. Advances or reimbursement of employee expenses, services provided exclusively entirely by an individual and 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 a when and when a local ownership, a local unit shall have discretion to require claim and certification as it deems necessary and appropriate. Be further resolved that this policy be applied to a non bi, in a non binary fashion and will be affirmatively be communicated to vendors. The purpose of this mainly is is that it's very difficult for us to get certifications from vendors on on purchase orders and invoices and payment practices. And it actually slows down our ability to reimburse people for their their services. So by doing this will be actually more timely in making payments to our vendors. So move.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Hi.
Commissioner Petrako.
Hi.
Mayor Kelly.
And not only will it be more timely, but we'll save some money on postage, right? I I I would, hi.
Yes. My next resolution, governing bodies certification of compliance with the United States Equal Employment Opportunity Commission's enforcement guidance on the consideration of arrest and conviction records in the employment decisions under Title Seven of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty. For I I vote the resolution as written, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Hi.
Commissioner Petrako.
Hi.
Mayor Kelly.
Hi.
Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Evans, do you want to read Commissioner Tucci's?
Sure.
Three resolutions.
For Commissioner Tucci, whereas the Township of Nutley entered into a contract with Varadian Environmental Consultants in Upper Montclair, New Jersey for NJDEP response for Glotzback, Tremont Place and Chestnut Street. The director parks and public property has recommended the following change order to set contract, change order number two. DEP response for Glotzback, Tremont Place and Chestnut Street in the amount of three thousand dollars. Funds are available from capital ordinance thirty four twenty five C and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer. Said certification will be attached to this resolution now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners and Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey. The change order two in the amount of three thousand dollars is hereby approved. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Hi.
Commissioner Petrako.
Hi.
Mayor Kelly.
Hi.
The next resolution is provides refunds to families or cancellation of participation in programs. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey. That the treasurer is hereby authorized to refund payments for recreation programs in the amounts listed below included in the resolution. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Hi.
Commissioner Petrako.
Hi.
Mayor Kelly.
Hi.
Whereas the Townships of Nutley pursuant to NJSA fifty two colon thirty four, six dash two C one thirty nine made by resolution and without advertising for bids, purchases of goods or services to the use of a nationally recognized accepted cooperative purchasing program that has been developed utilizing a cooperative bidding process by another contracting unit within the state of New Jersey or within any other state when available, whereas the Board of Commissioners passed resolution two forty seven dash twenty three on October seventeenth, twenty twenty three, authorizing the purchasing agent to purchase certain goods and services from approved Sourcewell vendors pursuant to all conditions of the individual contracts for the year twenty twenty four commencing on January one through December thirty first. Whereas the municipal clerk township of Nutley has advertised the township's notice of intent to award a contract under the National Cooperative Purchasing Agreement in in the May May tenth issue of the Herald News, whereas Caterpillar Inc. One hundred East Adams Street, Peoria, Illinois, entered contract zero one one seven two three with Sourcewell on May twenty fourth, twenty twenty three. Whereas the Township of Nutley Department of Parks and Public Property intends to purchase a Cat Calipilla model four twenty with a backhoe. I even think it has a stereo radio. Twenty twenty four model and related accessories from Foley Incorporated. Eight fifty five Continental Avenue, Piscataway, a vendor affiliated with Sourcewell, which is subject to all conditions applicable to the utilization of the national buying cooperative. Whereas the Department of Public Property has researched backhoe loaders and determined that the Cat Calipella model four twenty is best suited for the township needs based on performance, cost savings and minimal downtime. Whereas Foley Inc. has provided a quote in the amount of one hundred seventy five thousand six hundred forty four dollars, whereas funds are available from a fully funded capital ordinance thirty five fifty, which was adopted on June sixth, twenty twenty four and provides one hundred and seventy five thousand six hundred forty four dollars for the above purchase and has been certified by the Chief Financial Officer subject to said ordinance now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners the Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, that the purchasing agent be and she is hereby authorized to purchase the Cat Caterpillar model four twenty with the backhoe, the twenty four, twenty twenty four model year and related accessories from Foley Incorporated, eight fifty five Centennial Avenue, Piscataway, New Jersey, in the amount stated in here herein, who is an approved Sourcewell vendor. So move.
Second.
Hi.
All right.
Commissioner Petrako.
Hi.
Mayor Kelly.
Abstain.
Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Scarpelli, your resolution?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution number one sixty seven twenty four, which I'm going to read by title. The resolution authorizing approval to suspend a grant application and execute a grant agreement with the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the Bloomfield Avenue roadway project fiscal year twenty twenty five, which will run from High Street to Raymond Avenue. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Hi.
Commissioner Petrako.
Hi.
Mayor Kelly.
Hi.
So I have there.
Commissioner Petrako.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. This resolution I'll read by title also. It's one sixty four dash twenty five. This is Nicoletti on Twin Towings contract. I move it as written.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Hi. Commissioner Scarpelli.
Hi.
Commissioner Petrako.
Hi.
Mayor. Mayor Kelly.
Hi.
Whereas resolution number eighty four dash twenty four was previously approved by the governing body of the Township of Nutley permitting the appropriate township officials to contract with Good Shepherd Academy to provide a special law enforcement officer three. Whereas the Board of Commissioners wish to rescind resolution number eighty four dash twenty four as appropriate party to contract with to provide special law enforcement officer three in Nutley Board of Education now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey that this resolution number eighty four dash twenty five is hereby rescinded. Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Hi.
Commissioner Petrako.
Hi.
Mayor Kelly.
Hi.
Whereas the state of New Jersey provides security aid to the Nutley Board of Education that is used to extend security aid benefit for private school system with it within the municipality. And whereas the Good Shepherd Academy twenty four Brookline Avenue, New Jersey, has a need for security services and has requested it, requested to use a special law enforcement officer a SLEO three through the Nutley Police Department. As recommended by the state of New Jersey and whereas both the Board of Ed and the Township of Nutley agree that the school security officer can be can be provided to Good Shepherd Academy and desires to enter into an agreement to provide for a SLEO three through the Nutley Police Department, whereas this agreement will reimburse the township for full cost to provide SLEO three to the Good Shepherd Academy. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley. County of Essex State and New Jersey, the Commissioner of Public Safety and the Municipal Clerk are authorized to enter into an agreement with the Board of Ed to provide a SLEO three to Good Shepherd Academy. I move it.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Hi.
Commissioner Petrako.
Hi.
Mayor Kelly.
Hi. If I could hear me. And I have one resolution on for this evening. Whereas the Department of New Jersey, the, whereas the New Jersey Department of the Treasury Division of Taxation has provided tax clearance certificates and said licensees are qualified to be licensed according to all standards established by New Jersey statutes annotated thirty three and regulations promulgated thereunder, as well as pertinent local ordinance and conditions consistent with Title Thirty Three for each establishment listed below and for this renewal period. And whereas these establishments have been inspected by the Board of Health, Fire Department, Code Enforcement Department and the Police Department of the Township of Nutley are in satisfactory condition. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey that the renewal of the plenary retail consumption licenses, plenary retail distribution licenses and Cub licenses be granted to the following licensees effective July first, twenty twenty four through June, June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Be further resolved that the municipal clerk be and it be and is hereby authorized to sign, issue said license certificates for the licensing period, July first, twenty twenty four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Mister Bruno, do I need to read all of these or can I just?
No, we could move it into.
And then I move the resolution as introduced.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Hi.
Commissioner Petrako.
Hi.
Mayor Kelly.
Hi. At this time, we would open the meeting to public comment. Anyone who wishing to be heard on any issue before the for the Board of Commissioners may approach the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, hi, everybody. Sam Assali, one seventy three Franklin Avenue. How's the microphone? It's good? Okay, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Commissioner, I'm part of the community. A lot of things we hear about the Board of Education. You have to step in. Because everybody worry about their kids. Everybody worry about their grandkids. There's a lot of thing going on. A lot of people here, but they don't hear from the mayor. They don't hear from the commissioner. And you are, you are us. So you have to be in public, tell everybody what's going on. Tell them where is the money is, where did they go? When you comes you here chair of twenty dollar. The Board of Education spent two hundred dollar on it. And everybody know right now. So I'm a, I'm one of the person. I have a lot of connection with the people. This is my first meeting for twenty years in Nutley. I don't come. Good relation, Mayor. We like to see some action. I'll be honest with you because we hear increasing the tax. We fire teacher. We fire employee. We don't have no budget. But we increase the budget. Where is the money is? This what the people talk. If they don't come to you or your face and tell you. But we talk. We talk, everybody we sit and we talk and see what's going on. And this is my first meeting I come to meet everybody and see everybody. But you're gonna see a lot of people, they're gonna open their mouth. And they are already starting open. And you're not gonna hear a lot of thing in the front of the city hall. Everybody getting upset and angry about their kids. But couple people that can't be in the front. Ten people tomorrow, there will be twenty. After tomorrow, there will be fifty. And after maybe half of the town. Maybe they don't come because I know the mayor, I know Al, I know Alvin, I know. We don't want to say it make it big, but it is big right now. Because nobody hear anything. Somebody cover it. What happened? What's going on? What is the ten million, eleven million, seven million? Where they go? Because one of the business, if I'm buying this microphone and this microphone costs twenty dollar. And the Board of Education over the town debate two hundred fifty dollar. Why? Who know? Who got the money? What's going on? A lot of kids, they need help. Oh, we cannot do it now. We don't have no money. Teacher fire. We don't have no budget. Why? Where is the money, Mr. Mayor? Where did the money go? That's what everybody asking this question. And honestly, everybody talk. So maybe Sam, he has the money in his pocket. Maybe the people behind me. And this I'm telling you the true what happened in the industry. So I have a lot of people connection and stuff. I say I'm gonna be in the meeting this week. And I have to tell Mr. Mayor and the Commissioner to step in because is is really if you don't, you're gonna have big issue in the town, special the kids. This is the kids' money. And everybody upset. If you don't hear it, I wish you be in the street and not go door and see the people with the kids because when the vote for you, the vote for you to protect them is not to cover somebody, people or somebody or we don't know. So please, if I come, maybe I have a hundred or two hundred voice behind me. But you have to be, Mr. Mayor and the Commissioner be in the street like as a vote. When you vote, we see all of you. But after the vote, we don't see nobody. So please be connection, connect with the people, connect with the business, connect with the owner of the house, connect with some grandfather and thing to hear what's going on because they will be more comfortable if they see you, you care about the town. So thank you so much and I appreciate that you hear me. Thank you.
Thank you. And yes, this is a problem that affects all of us and the only way we're going to get through it is by working together. And we as a Board of Commissioners have been offering our assistance to to the Board of Education. I I know I I met with the monitor, I know, I think almost all of us have have met with the monitor and had a personal conversation with her. We've met with various board members and seeing how we can pitch in and help. The only way we're going to get through this is by getting through it together. And and so far, the Board of Education has and the monitor and the superintendent have assured me and I'm sure I'm sure they have assured the other commissioners that no education program will will be cut. The education offerings are going to be exactly the same going forward. There might be some different teachers in the school. That's an unfortunate side effect of the budget. And that's something that that we are going to be calling for is an in-depth inspection of of that budget to see what went wrong. Right now, all indications are pointing that it there was, the revenues were overstated. And so the budget was spending, we were spending more than we were actually taking in, which created the deficit. And and it's going to be something that we we have been closely watching, we are closely watching and will continue to closely watch going forward. And I know that I've offered my assistance and I'm working with the certain members of the Board of Education, the superintendent on how the Health Department can kind of step in and fill some gaps and provide some cost saving measures. And I'm going to let some of the other commissioners, if they want to speak on this, also address the, starting with Commissioner Evans.
So first off, thank you for coming. I really appreciate it. You're, I heard your comments and your thoughts. The, so to your yeah, I have, I have, I'm in thinking about responding to you. I can I can share with you some information. There's some other information that I can't because I don't, I don't, I can't control that information because anything that involves any personnel matter. You know, we are not, you know, we're, you know, we're not in a position to comment on that directly. So aside from personnel, right, I will address your, your, your question. Would that be okay? Okay. So I've been involved heavily with the Board of Education matter. I was invited as the Revenue and Finance Commissioner to come and meet with them to understand more about what happened and what could be done about it. To offer my experience, my, as a CPA, my, my, my background to 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 help out the situation. When you look at the absolute situation, there it's very factual. It's very easy to see. When, just like we were talking about earlier, we have cap limits on how much you can increase the budget. You know, what the exceptions are, but there are limits. So the school board has for a very long So the school board has for a very long time, uh, positioned themselves that their budget would go up two percent and staying with that. Their cost structure though was going up greater than that. Right? So eventually, right, you reach a point where there's not enough money coming in to pay the bills. Uh, so, uh, in order to make the budget work, the, a couple of things happened. Um, and this is my, 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 my view, uh, there, there's a lot. And, and the FAQs that were, uh, released. Uh, I helped craft those to help people understand. So one, the budget that was submitted, uh, for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year had in it uh, new revenues of two point one million dollars for miscellaneous revenues, uh, which were new compared to prior years. And based upon prior years, through, it was not clear why we would be getting all of this money, uh, coming in. Uh, the other side is that, uh, as we all are facing this significant increases in healthcare costs. So not all of the healthcare budget was actually budgeted. It was budgeted at a lower number in hopes that the projections would be less. Uh, and unfortunately that didn't happen. Uh, there are other items of necessary spending that were just excluded from the budget. So when you put that together, so round numbers, right? Two million dollars worth of overstated revenue, three million dollars of understated healthcare. Uh, two million dollars of, of other spending that was necessary that wasn't budgeted, you know, all of a sudden you're at seven million dollars. Uh, did anybody steal seven million dollars? To my knowledge, absolutely not. Was it, was it a process of, um, misbudgeting that, that worked through the system and got approved? I believe, yes, right, from what I've looked at. Aleni, Aleni.
Commissioner.
Hand him a glass of water, the bottle of water right there.
Commissioner, you can't miss it with one million dollar, ten percent, five percent, two percent. You can, but thank you, but thank you. Seven million dollar.
Hmm.
I don't think is, this is confusing.
It's not, it's not confusing.
It's a big number.
So, so the individual responsible for that is no longer employed with the school system. Right? So, and I, and that's as far as I can go. There, the circumstances around that, I can't go into any, any detail, but he's no longer there. Uh, and there is a new BA that's coming in. The amount of money that's necessary was, it was necessary to reach out to the stake, state, uh, to, uh, borrow money in form of a loan. Uh, it's a ten-year, no interest loan, paid off one tenth a year for ten years. Uh, and there's two components to it. One was to, uh, provide the monies necessary to pay bills that were unpaid and they were being held, uh, before the end of June. Uh, and then the other piece is going into the new school year that begins on July first, making sure they had the necessary, uh, monies to operate the school system and, and, and go forth. When we looked at the budget that was adopted for, uh, two thousand and twenty-three, and then you started to look at the next year's budget. Right? With cost increases, adding in the things that had to be taken care of, the, the increase in the budget was thirteen million dollars. Right? Uh, fortunately, the state, uh, in the, just happened to, in the normal course, uh, increased the aid for the municipality by three million dollars. Uh, there were budget cuts, necessary budget cuts, uh, that absorbed roughly six million dollars of that gap. And the balance, which is about three point three million, is what was, uh, is the increase to be paid for by the taxpayers. Right? To get, to get through it. That, all that does, and all we've done at this point in time is establish a go-forward budget that covers what the costs are. Right? That budget is so lean that there is no money in that budget in terms of a capital reserve right now, that if something broke and it was big, that the school would not be able to fix it. This board through what we call one Nully by agreement, uh, gives us some latitude to assist in the event something like that happens, to assist the school board to make sure that they don't lose a classroom, that they provide, uh, the things that are, are necessary. Keep in mind that by law, the school district is a different governmental entity governed by different rules, and we as the Board of Commissioners have no authority to influence what that is. We can help and when we're invited, and the good news is we have been. I, I've spent, uh, in one meeting, I spent three and a half hours with the state monitor. She is very competent and she's very, uh, strong-willed to make sure, and her focus right now is on making sure the bills get paid. And that the school system has the money it needs to operate the, the, for the coming school year. She was also very, uh, very much involved, and I had interviewed, uh, the BA, that, that Mike DeVita that has been hired. And the good news is he's very experienced. He, uh, also has, uh, a, an accounting and finance background. Uh, so he understands what he's doing and he comes from a good school system, uh, where he had tenure. Uh, but he chose to come back to Nully to help Nully. So we're, uh, very fortunate in that we have a, a business administrator who will be starting that actually has a good reputation, great experience and, uh, would not do what the pred- his predecessor did in order to meet the budget requirements. There's another element that people don't appreciate fully is that the Board of Trustees of the Board of Education, uh, have a role. The superintendent has a role. The superintendent is responsible for administering the educational process for the entire district. The business administrator is responsible for providing the monies necessary to operate the, the district. It's the school board's responsibility to, uh, make inquiry, to determine whether or not the information that they're getting is true, accurate and complete. Uh, and, uh, again, uh, I, I believe that, uh, I would characterize it as a misplaced reliance when someone isn't being forthright and, and you, you don't catch it. So we're getting out of this, there's a bill to pay, but more importantly, the school district has a lot of work to do to not just get through and not maintain programs. They have to evaluate all of their programs. They have to invest in what's the educational response we need to have to educate our children in order to be able to operate effectively as adults in the twenty-first century in a world of advancing technology and different job requirements. So they have to look at that. It's not just about, uh, our special needs children that need help. It's about all of our children and there's four thousand of them in the school system. So they have a big job to do and, um, my focus has been on understanding that. The last piece is, which the mayor, uh, referred to is, uh, and people talk about a forensic audit. There is no requirement by the state that necessitates that if you borrow money from them, that they automatically do a forensic audit. Uh, the, the monitor has placed a priority focus on one, getting the bills paid and get through the rest of the school year, which ends June thirtieth. Two, making sure the budget operates effectively and has the money in place for the school year beginning July first. And that the new BA gets seated to make sure that the controls are in place, uh, to, uh, make sure that what has happened does not happen again. I have talked with her directly about, uh, the need for, uh, completing, uh, which referred to as a forensic audit. And many people have referred to that. Uh, and while, uh, she's not doing that right now, she, she has agreed that it will be done. But these are her first priorities because that's happening right now. Uh, I also, we have offered that if they don't have the money, uh, to do that, because it's not paid for by the state, it comes from the taxpayers, that we, the Board of Commissioners, you know, we will figure out a way to, uh, to pay for the cost of whatever that turns out to be. So I don't expect a forensic audit to be done today, tomorrow, but it will be done probably in the, in the, the, the fall, uh, the fall timeframe.
I'm with you a hundred percent and thank you. And now all of you working hard, but they think, eh, publish it to the people. Tell the people that. Single mom, she have three kids, she's going crazy.
Hmm.
Grandfather, he don't have five dollar in his pocket, he's going crazy. This is a problem.
Oh, yeah.
You know, so doesn't matter if Board of Education, you say, oh, nobody above me, nobody give me order, nobody. Doesn't mean he has the right to do anything. There still, we have mayor and commissioner we trust.
Sure.
They have to step in the top of them.
Absolutely. So we're doing.
At the end, we vote for them. So if they're gonna come and like some of the father. I'm telling you this from somebody that told me, they go to the, say something to the Board of Education, they, they give him attitude. Who you are, you giving attitude to the person he vote for you. Who you are. Is nobody above the law and nobody above God. You're not God. To give attitude because you sitting in the chair, you are in the big.
Sure.
No, it's not right.
So, so we have a limit here on, on questions, you know, you're well past that, but this board always gives a resident as much time as they need for a valuable conversation because the goal is not just that you hear us, but that you understand.
Exactly.
Right? And, uh, my board knows that we say this all the time, you're, you deserve the truth. You reserve the right not to like it.
That, exactly.
But you're, you're, you are entitled to the truth. And, and what happens is, uh, you know, we as a board, the municipal side, five municipal departments, right, represents about thirty-four cents on the dollar of your property tax bill. The school board's a little over fifty cents on the dollar and the rest of it goes to the county. So we're roughly a third of what that total bill is and we operate, uh, the, the township on that basis. That's sixty-two million dollars though, and the school board's eighty million dollars. So we have conversation all the time that says everything we do, every conversation is, is understanding is that if we spend money, if we think about spending money, we do an improvement, we hire somebody. One hundred percent of the time, we know and understand we're using somebody else's money to do that. And we owe it to them to be fair about that and to be careful. I have, in my meetings with the Board of Education, I reminded them of that same fact.
Thank you, but that, at the end, you gain blame from the public, from the people in the street, you gain the blame from the mayor to the commissioner. They don't have the education. You don't have power to, to deal with the Board of Education. But when you comes and we said, everybody, oh, this mayor, he did this, this commissioner, he did that. They don't have education. You have to educate them, except to hear it from the Facebook. And one mother go to the, another mother tell her and go public all over. Oh, commissioner, that, that's what they say, the mayor, this is what they say. Publish it to the people. Tell them what's going on. Don't worry about your kids. Don't worry about your grandkids. Even the kids talking between themselves, oh, you're not gonna have this, you're not, the kids. The fifth grade and sixth grade, I'm not talking about middle and high school. So you imagine the middle and the high school, they talking between themselves, I'm, I'm sure you have kids. And I'm sure that comes to you and that comes, oh, you hear what's going on? Kids just start talking inside the house about the Board of Education. The, the kids is not, I'm not telling you I'm T for, he's T for, but the kids are saying, what's going on? And this is the truth. And I'm one of the guys, I vote for you guys, I love you. But at the end, if you don't come protect my back, I'm gonna say, but I'm blaming you.
Sam, but let me just add to what Commissioner Evans said because I think he did a great job of explaining it. The first thing is, is that we are two separate boards. We do not have any power over them whatsoever. They're elected, we're elected. So that's the number one fact. So we could go sit at a meeting. You know I have a kid in the school system still, and I could raise my hand as a parent and ask them questions, but not as a commissioner, if they don't want to answer me, they don't have to. However, we have all met with the state monitor. I met with her myself, Tom's met with her, Kelly's met with her, all that stuff, so. And it's their extending the olive branch to us to even allow us to meet with her because she doesn't owe us any, any explanation. But what I want you to leave with because I heard what you said about the microphone. How do we know if the microphone is ten dollars? And if the Board of Ed paid two hundred dollars because everything should be competitive, right? So the one thing that I am, and when I talk to the board members, I keep telling them the same message. We need a timeline, okay? Again, not to be redundant, but you weren't at the last meeting. When I took over the ambulance squad and my name was being dragged through the mud, I stayed strong and obviously I was right. However, January first, I said, we're gonna do an investigation. On, um, August first, we're gonna have the results of it and then we're gonna have, move on. And I've asked the Board of Education to do that, put something out so that people aren't coming to our mic, or their mic, and they're gonna get answers. When I met with the state monitor, I have to tell you, I understand she has her hands full with this year's budget to make everything right. And I asked her about the money and what happened to it. It's bad accounting practices and so forth and so on. Like you are, I am. So I said, well, what are you doing about all these expenditures? Like you're just moving forward, like in my opinion, before you can move forward, you have to move back. Which to see what the issues were and where this money went, because the people of Nully deserve that answer. So like Commissioner Evans said, they are, we're gonna, oh, we wind up paying for the forensic audit. But that's the only way that you get those answers because I am curious as a taxpayer, as a resident, as a business owner, as a parent. I want to make sure that there was no funny business going on. And how do you do that? You look at every expenditure that was signed. If they brought ten shares in the market value for the ten shares or ten dollars apiece, that expenditure should be a hundred dollars, not two thousand dollars. So I am really, really curious and I can't wait for that to be performed. And I give you my word on our friendship and I give the residents of Nully my promise. As a parent as well, we all deserve those answers and it will be done. That's a promise from me.
The, the reason I, I'm here today, one of the reason, couple days ago, we have the barbecue. One of, one of the family, one of, one of the single mom, she told me, Sammy, I'm gonna sell my house. I say, why? I say, I'm worried about my kids. And this girl, she grow up in Nully. And okay, she hears so much from another woman and she believe it. So she have her two kids, single mom. Her, her husband die, so she wanna leave from the town and she work hard to have her house. I tell her, don't worry, you're gonna be everything okay. Why you gonna move? And the kids, they don't wanna move. The problem, the kids are cry for her, they give her headache and heart attack too. Every day, we're not gonna move. We want our friend. So this one of the reason, believe me, I was here today. And this why I, I, I comes and stop and, and say, and thank you very much, you know, you listen to me and I appreciate that and God bless you.
Yeah, Sam, before you, uh, step away from the microphone, I, I do want you to know that I have a grandson that's in the pre-K program. Next September, he'll be starting, uh, kindergarten and I'll have another grandson that'll be starting the pre-K program in two years. So yes, we are concerned about the education system. And I can tell you, we're, this board is gonna do everything it can to make sure that nothing changes, nothing suffers because the future of our town is always dependent upon the school system. And we want to make sure that our school system continues to educate our children, continues to give a quality education. And that we're gonna do everything in our power to make sure that happens, that we can guarantee you. And that anything else we can do as Commissioner, uh, Patraco said about making sure the forensic audit. I'm not as eloquent as Commissioner Evans, but I want you to know that we are not going to let our school system go down. We will do everything in our power to stop that.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Yes, I want to thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you for your comments and, uh, we welcome you back. We hope that you keep our feet to the fire, uh, because we're not gonna let this go.
We hope that you keep our feet to the fire, uh, because we're not gonna let this go. Anyone else wish to be heard this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion. Uh, we are not going to adjourn, we're gonna continue the meeting on, uh, June twenty-sixth at nine thirty, when we'll, uh, have the, uh, the final hearing on the budget and, uh, vote on the budget. I guess we'll make a motion to continue at June twenty-sixth at nine thirty.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Pacheco?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye. And, uh, I think we have a need for executive.
I need a motion?
Move it, second.
Thank you. Whereas Section Eight of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter two thirty-one, Public Law nineteen seventy-five permits the exclusion of the public from meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas the public bodies of the opinion that such circumstances exist and whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley in the County of Essex and State of New Jersey desires to proceed to close executive session, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley move into close executive session to discuss litigation and contract negotiations, be a further resolved at the time when such discussions may be disclosed to the public shall be when and such disclosures may be made without adversely affecting the Township of Nutley pending and or anticipated legal personnel contractual matters and other matters within the exception provided for by statute. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Pacheco?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
And the time is now eight thirty-nine.